We'll wait for this a second. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Could you call a roll, please?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Okay, looking at the approval of the minutes, we do have enough to approve the June twenty twenty, or June twenty-four, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes with myself and Ms. McBride. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I would love to make a motion to approve the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four minutes of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission.
And I will second that motion. Could you please call a roll?
Dr. Baker?
Uh, Epstein.
We need to be, yes.
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. We do not have enough members to approve the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes, so those will be moved to our next meeting. All of our cases tonight are quasi-judicial hearings. With that, I have to read a...
So we can do the same thing for the November two?
Two, yes.
Okay.
So in that case, then, I would...
We just need, we need three votes and not all three.
I would make a motion that we approve the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission.
And I will second.
Could you call a roll, please?
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Okay, with the quasi-judicial hearing that are on all three of the items and on the agenda tonight, there is a brief, lengthy, so to speak, procedure that we have to follow that I have to read to you. So upon bringing the case to the floor for the commission, this will apply to all three cases tonight. If we see anyone that comes in later and they are going to testify, we will repeat this, but hopefully we've got everybody that will attend even the last hearing tonight. So first, I'll outline the procedure that the commission will follow in the hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts relating to compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is to the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify, one at a time, after being recognized by the chairperson. When all persons supporting the application are finished presenting, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chairperson. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As previous, as stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized by the chairperson, peek into the microphone, and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimonies be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand and raise your right hand and swear or affirm. So if you're going to provide any information to the commission, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Drury, could you please present case, major adjustment to case PUD one, two thousand sixteen?
Thank you. And so we had some paper copies of the staff report out on the sign-up table. If there are no more, the staff summaries and all of the information you'll see up on the screen is also on our website. It's under committees and zoning commission. Sometimes the screen up here isn't as clear as what's posted on our website. The exact PowerPoint is not on the website, but the application materials are and the staff report is, so. The first case is case one, twenty sixteen PUD. The applicant is Christopher Milner, who is with KMK Law on behalf of BEE Properties, Inc., who's the property owner. Location is at forty-two seventy Round Bottom Road, and the zoning there is ID PUD, which is Industrial Development Plan Unit Development. The applicant has installed two portable structures on the site, and they are acting as shelters to, for the equipment that's there stored on the site. So there are two structures. One is approximately sixty-five hundred square feet, and the other one is a little over twenty-eight hundred square feet. They're both open air structures, and again, they're used to shelter the equipment that's there on the site. We sent a notice of violation to the property owner, an unofficial notice in May, and then an official letter came in August, the first of August, for one structure. And then when we were back to do inspections in November, we noticed that a second structure had also been constructed without permits. So a little bit of zoning history on this property. The property was purchased by the current owner in May of twenty thirteen and began making improvements to the property without obtaining zoning approval at that time. The applicant, after notices of violation, made an application to the zoning commission for PUD, and this was for the operation of Round Bottom Rentals, which is a commercial and equipment rental business. There is also a separate parking lot that was constructed at that time, which is primarily used for Evans Landscaping Employees, which are across the street. And then the number of driveways at that time was also reduced from five to three along Round Bottom Road. Ultimately, the zoning commission approved the PUD. With one of the variances, one variance was denied. The variance that was approved was for the parking lot setback of five feet from the roadway versus what is required at ten feet. The one that was denied was regarding the parking aisle width and parking stall widths. That decision from the zoning commission, the decision of approval, was ultimately appealed, but later the appeal was dropped. So again, the township unofficially notified the applicant in May, and then after no response and an official zoning violation letter August the seventh regarding the structure, and then we noticed that a second structure was installed after our pictures for the zoning commission meeting. So we did a site visit with the Hamilton County Building Inspectors, as well as township staff, township's legal counsel, as well as the applicant's legal counsel. Just for clarification on what had been constructed on-site, and it was determined that there were two structures. Also, we had some clarification from the building department. The application came in as temporary mobile structures, but there is no definition in our zoning resolution about temporary mobile structures. So just for clarification purposes, these are accessory structures, and they do require zoning approval, and they do require building permits due to the size of the structures. So we did receive an updated plan on November the eighteenth. We also received a later plan that included an ISR, although the gravel wasn't included in the ISR, so it's not quite accurate. When this was approved in twenty fifteen, the ISR was approved at eighty-one percent, and we feel that that's probably about the same because the structures are going over already paved surfaces or gravel surfaces. So this is the site in question, outlined in red. This is Round Bottom Road. The existing building that was approved, it was already existing at the time in twenty sixteen. Evans Landscaping Headquarters is across the street. This is the aerial map of the site in question. The one of the structures, we'll see in the next photo. The topography is relatively flat. There's an increase in grade from the road. The zoning, again, is ID PUD, Industrial Development, with a Plan Unit Development overlay. All of the surrounding zoning is ID Industrial Development. So this is the site plan that was submitted. This was the existing building and existing shed. This was the first structure that we noticed constructed without permits, and then this is the second structure here, constructed. They do meet setbacks for the ID zoning district, so the setbacks are compliant. These are site photos looking down Round Bottom Road in both locations. These are the two structures. This is the larger of the two, and this is the one that is closer to the roadway. They're both similar style. They're open air, or I say, open on the sides. The larger structure is also taller than the smaller structure. This is Round Bottom looking back up toward the site, so you can see the larger structure of the two. This is the smaller structure. This just gives you an idea. Currently, they're just on top of grade. I think there is some connection. We're not sure exactly. That would need to be, if approved by the zoning commission, need to be approved by the building department for their building permits. But this is just to give you an idea of, it doesn't really have a footer. Again, just an idea of this, you know, the structure, how it was set there on the site. And then this one was set on asphalt. So the site plan, again, these are the elevation drawings of both of the structures. One was at seventeen feet high, and then the other one was at ten and a half feet high. So as far as zoning resolution compliance, they are compliant. Both structures are compliant with the setbacks of the zoning district that they're in. Again, there was some confusion about the ISR, and we don't have an accurate ISR once the structures have been constructed. But in twenty fifteen, the ISR was at eighty-one percent. The buildings, they are consistent with the current use of Round Bottom Rentals. They are structures that cover, you know, existing equipment. It is in an industrial development zoning district, so they're compliant and compatible with surrounding uses and the surrounding styles of the building. So beyond that, staff recommendation is to approve the two buildings. However, if approved, and these are also recommended by the applicant, number one, that building permit should be obtained for all the structures, that if these two structures are relocated on-site, a minor adjustment to the PUD is required, and this is something that can be handled through administrative review by the, by staff. If new structures are proposed, then this would require another hearing by our zoning commission as a major adjustment. So we have an answer. Any questions, Dr. Drury?
Dr. Baker, any questions of staff?
Not at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McBride, any questions of staff?
Yeah, Paul, I've just got one question. I know some of the others and stuff, there are different dumpster on the site. Do those follow, I guess they're not being used per se as dumpsters? Do those need to be screened at all for the code, or?
We're not sure what the dumps, some of the dumpsters are what they're being, I believe they're being rented out, but that'd be a question for the applicant as part of the business itself. There were some containers that we noticed on-site while we were there, and we're not, they're not on the site plan, and we're not exactly sure what the containers are being used for. There is existing landscaping and a fence along Round Bottom Road. The rear of the site is, if you can see the aerial, it is a vacant industrial property, and there's natural screening, but not on this property. It's on the adjacent property. So the screening requirement is actually from the roadway, not necessarily from the adjacent industrial property.
But you can see those dumpsters and stuff from the roadway, obviously.
Yes. We do have a screening for outdoor storage. It's a little gray here because that's their business, they're renting the equipment on the site.
Any questions of staff? Thank you. If the applicant's attorney would like to come forward and present their information? Again, please state your name, address, and affiliations of the case.
My name is Dan Ut. I'm an attorney with Keating Methuen Creek Camp, working with Chris Milner, who is the applicant. We're the attorney for the property owner, business owner, Round Bottom Rentals. With me today is the general manager, Barry Lupert, who runs the business on Round Bottom Road. And appreciate the report from Mr. Drury for start. Accurately summarizes the facts and the case. This was a little different from the start because client was of the understanding, perception that these were storage, temporary storage structures that could be moved, so didn't really understand until we had the feedback and the zoning violation notice from the township that these were considered an accessory structure that required a zoning certificate to put on the property. So we started down that path with my firm getting involved after the zoning violation letter was issued and initially responded to that letter timely to offer our position on why we didn't think they were subject to a zoning certificate. Had some discussions with the township attorney, Mr. Drury, and decided the better approach was to come back to the planning commission and request a modification to the existing PUD. And so that's where we're at today, to request that modification. These are open-air structures. There's no separate utilities that are, there's no lighting for these. It's really a mechanism for the business, that's a rental business, to store equipment that's for rent undercover so that it's more protected from rain, elements, sun, et cetera. We personally think that it also enhances the look of the property versus having equipment throughout the impervious, impervious areas of the lot. So we understand now because there had been some dialogue with the Hamilton County Building Department on whether these mobile structures required building permits initially. Let me clarify, these are engineered structures, too. They're safe structures. Mark Walker, a professional engineer, designed the structures. They were generated from repurposing metal beams and other materials to create these structures. And, and so we have a professional engineer that certified the design and the plans. Initially, had some feedback from a building inspector that these weren't something that were going to be subject to a building permit. We had a site meeting with Mr. Drury. That inspector, his supervisor, came to the conclusion at that meeting that we needed to go ahead and submit for building permits. So that's the plan of action here. If the planning commission approves the PUD modification, that we would next, based on having a zoning certificate, submit and get building permits and confirm what Hamilton County is going to require in terms of anchoring to the ground. We understand from the staff report that if these movable structures are in fact proposed to be moved, that we would have to get a minor modification of the, the PUD to permit that movement of the structure. So today, as we said here, I think the location of those two structures that are setback from the road and compliance with setback requirements and how we use the business, how they operate the business, that these are the right locations for these structures. And I would also offer that we think with this property being surrounded by industrial development properties that are zoned for industrial development, Mr. Evans, who owns this property through one of his companies, owns the properties on all side of this site as well, so we're not impacting any residential area. There's been beautification of the property on both sides. I mean, if, just, if you think back to when this initial PUD was approved in two thousand sixteen, there was a somewhat blighted property. They demolished an existing blighted house and beautified the site, added some nice fencing. We have some parking for the Evans employees generally that was subject to the original PUDs. So our perspective is that we're trying to be good stewards of the property and providing a productive use of this property in the industrial development district and employing people and just trying to have a, a better look and functioning property by covering our equipment. So I would close, and, and if you would like to ask Mr. Lupert any questions regarding operation of the business, since he's the general manager, he's here to answer those questions. But we think we meet the standards for approval for this modification of the PUD and would respectfully request that the planning commission approve it. Let me know if you have any questions.
Ms. McBride, any questions of the applicant's attorney?
Yeah, just a, just a couple. Do you anticipate that there are going to be more structures added to the property?
Not to this property.
And then my question going back, the dumpsters that are on the site, are those being utilized as dumpsters, or are those?
They're for rental. It's part of the rental business.
Yeah, they're rentals. We have one dumpster through Rumpie, but it's not, it's for the business, right?
Right. But the other dumpsters are?
Yeah, there's, there's one that we keep on-site all the time. We don't rent them very often. So that one in the picture is it.
You just happen to be a contractor?
Yeah, it's all, it's really almost always there, waiting to go out.
That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Baker, any questions of the applicant's attorney?
No.
I've got a few questions.
Okay.
On, in photographs, and when I drove by, there seems to be other things that aren't rental or equipment laying on-site. You know, what is the purpose of that? And, you know, again, that sort of open storage and how that applies to zoning code is...
So describe your business, Barry. So you're renting what type of equipment? And I know we've got some trailers that are there, too.
It'd be, I mean, if you, there's some material left from that building, or those structures sitting on-site, and then there's, you're probably...
What structure is that?
The two...
The two new structures?
The two, the ones that we're talking about.
Right, okay.
And then the Conex boxes are, what is it, storage containers. Those are, those are rental offices. You take them to a site, drop them off. If you're going to be on a job for a year or two, then you lock, people can lock their equipment up.
So those are rentals also, not this storage?
Right. There's also some offices. Some of those have offices.
But those are rental equipment for the business, correct? So they may not move that often, but they are...
No, they don't move very often.
But they are rental equipment?
Now, leftover material from the construction of these two structures, is that going to be removed from this property?
What are we talk, what are we talking about specifically?
I think there's metal, I-beams, the roof, excess roof, roofing stuff. I don't honestly know what all, it's back in the back corners what you're talking about, right? Yeah, it's, it's all stuff that could have been used to build these. So it really is just excess material. I don't know what the plan is ultimately for that, but that's why it's there.
All right.
Not to build a new structure, to be clear, on this site.
So just to clarify for Ms. McBride, so Article three sixteen, letter K, number two, this is in the ID zoning district, it says, "No open storage of materials inventory or equipment shall be permitted within two hundred feet of any residence district," which this is not within two hundred feet of residence district or residential property line. "Any other such open storage visible from any property line of the lot or tract shall, notwithstanding Article five point two nine, be screened by solid fence or wall or dense row of foliage not less than eight feet." And it says dumpsters, utility boxes, and other unsightly appearances shall be screened in the same manner. So again, it's the interpretation of this is their business, this is the rental equipment that they're using, should it be screened or not? So that's something that can be discussed by the zoning commission as part of the PUD.
So the fact that they do have equipment stored on the site, whether it's for rental or for use or whatever, does that fall under that requirement that it be screened? And I'm talking primarily from the right of way.
In, in the, from, from the right of way, yes. From the adjacent property owners, which this property right adjacent is by Martin Marietta, owned by Martin Marietta. It would be adjacent to that. This property here is adjacent to, it's an Evans parking lot, so this is, and it's kind of all used as, as one. But some of the open stores right through here, we have required, you know, with distribution facilities, that they have solid screening around their parking lines, and then if there are open storage of different materials, we have required that it be screened.
That wasn't in the original PUD, though, correct?
The landscaping that's there now is what was approved during the original PUD.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
If anyone else would like to present evidence to the commission in support of the applicant? Okay, seeing no one, is anyone in the audience would like to present evidence to the commission in opposition of the application? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for this case and open discussion amongst the commission. So Dr. Baker, we'll start at your end right now.
You know, I think for me, the obvious point is that the owner of this business has provably not operated in good faith and already has violated the zoning regulations. So anything that we agree to has to be stringently enforced. I am very concerned that this particular owner will not operate in good faith, and I am unpersuaded by the attorney's statement that they didn't know that it needed approval.
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
I mean, I would, I would agree with, with Dr. Baker that this particular, excuse me, applicant has demonstrated a blatant disregard for zoning and building permits. However, having said that, if they are in fact using it as a rental facility and they choose to cover that equipment, I can, I can understand that. I do believe that they should have known from the beginning because those structures, per the photographs that staff told, they are anchored to the ground, which in my opinion then makes them a structure attached to the ground. Whether they're permanently attached or temporarily attached, they are attached to the ground. So, you know, I, I agree with, with Dr. Baker that anything that we do here this evening is going to require our inspectors to be out there on a pretty regular basis, unfortunately.
And I concur with both of you also. You know, I look at these two structures, it's not unlike a tent, you know, which requires zoning approval, you know? Whether it's not a tent and truly an engineered structure or not, you know, it's still that sort of underlying sort of use and installation thing. You know, I do understand the nature of the business and wanting to sort of cover their equipment. I guess what kind of disturbs me a little bit is, you know, they do have storage of unused building materials that are just on-site, okay? It's not screened. They do have one dumpster that they use for their business purposes that is unscreened also, you know, from the public right of way. And with knowing sort of the uphill side behind this property is owned by somebody else, then I think that falls under what Paul was talking about, screening of that material from adjacent properties. You know, since it is not owned by the entity. You know, other than that, you know, knowing that they have to get a building permit, you know, is reassuring, I think, for the public safety of their employees who may be entering those structures, or even the general public that may be renting the equipment, they have to go into that. You know, how they're anchored and they don't see any uplift, why it will high wind to them. So, you know, that has to be there. And I agree with, again, both of you guys, that strict sort of monitoring of the situation of future construction, you know, is going to be needed throughout this area, but also generally the township, you know, in general, too. So I've spoken too much already. too. So I've spoken too much already. With that, if anyone would like to make a motion or any other further discussions?
I ask that for one additional question. If part of that motion was to view that the township was to, let me back up and ask that question first. Did you have the opportunity to inspect the entire site?
This particular site, yes.
And were there other zoning violations?
No new structures, other than the two that were noted.
Right, but the un-screened dumpster that they use for waste and storage of materials?
Again, we raised the question while we were there, what is the equipment being used for, whether the container is being used for, yes.
So there are other pending zoning violations then?
We don't know if they're violations yet or not, because we didn't really get a straight answer of what all of that was used for.
The public comment portion of this is over. If the commission would like to open it back up for that, hold on, Mr. H-
If the commission would like to open it back up, that's their own prerogative, but at least for now. And then until you say otherwise, public comment portion is over.
Thank you. You know, I, I'll defer to the other commission members. You know, I asked some questions about the open storage and dumpsters. You know, we got a response, I think satisfies me for that response. But do you want to hear from the applicant's attorney?
No, I do have a question for Paul, though. I'm not sure I fully tracked what you were saying about the permeability.
So with pervious versus impervious surface, anything over 60% triggers a PUD hearing. So that's why this was originally heard by the zoning commission and approved as a PUD, because at the time in 2015, 2016, it was heard in February, but the plans were in 2015. The impervious surface ratio was 81%, which had been decreased from 2011. This is on the plan that was approved in 2016, from 92%. So we had just asked for clarification if the construction of these buildings increased or decreased the impervious surface. The plan that was later submitted that did not make your pocket, because it was after our deadline, came back at 60%. But it was noted on the plan that the gravel area was not included in the impervious surface, and it is defined in our zoning resolution that we include gravel areas, because when water hits the gravel, it doesn't soak in as it would a grassy area. So we still include the gravel areas because they're compacted. So we just, we didn't have an exact impervious surface and a clear answer of whether more was created with the buildings. Just looking at aerials, it looks like they were constructed over already gravel surfaces. So it's doubtful that the impervious surface changed. We were just trying to make sure and get an exact answer.
Sounds fair. And I think as a commission, we believe we have all the information and we provided, you know, requests for information. So thank you for offering, but we'll continue on. So with that, any other further discussions or clarification? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we approved Case 1-2016, community major adjustment of property at 4270 Round Bottom Road, based on staff's findings, recommendations, and the standards for PUD plan approval. And I would make that motion subject to the following conditions. There will be no additional structures, but a temporary or permanent on the property without obtaining the applicable zoning and building permits that are required. That the applicant supply the township with an accurate reading on the impervious surface area currently on the site. That if the two structures that we are considering here this evening are to be relocated in any way, that that would require a minor modification to be reviewed and approved by the Anderson staff. And that the township be allowed to inspect the property, cite any violations, and that those violations be addressed within a reasonable period of time.
May I ask a couple of questions of your motion? Thank you. Should the application, if the existing structures are relocated, be made prior to them being moved? Will you amend that?
If, you mean if they were moved?
Yes, on-site.
I'm not good understanding your question.
You know, even staff says, you know, it'd require an application for zoning certificate because it's how we submit it, where they can move it and then make the submission for the zoning certificate. I want them to make the motion before they move anything or change their slate, if that would be possible in your motion.
So I guess I would amend my motion. I agree with what you're saying. I'm just trying to-
I know how to work.
I would amend my motion to say that the structures remain as indicated on the site plan today, and that if they are to be moved prior or subsequent to the issuance of the zoning certificate and the building permits, then that would be considered as a minor modification by staff for reviewing approval.
And then for staff's comment, number three, if new structures are proposed, submitted to the zoning commission for review, I didn't hear that quite in here.
Well, but that would go with the fact that they would be complying with the zoning regulations. And I'm sure it's their intent to comply with future zoning regulations in the future.
Okay, great. All right, thanks very much. Sorry for my questions, though. Second for the motion. Okay, I will second the motion. Can you please go roll Ms. Donald?
Dr. Baker? Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Goffler?
Yes. Thank you very much. Now, staff could present the Case 4-2024 PUD for 5505 Clough Pike. Because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I'm not going to re-read the booklet that I read. But if you did come in and you plan on giving evidence or presenting any information spoken to the commission, we do require you to be sworn in. So if you were not sworn in previously and you came in later and would like to be sworn in, please stand. Okay? And then do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God? Thank you very much.
All right, this is Case 4, 2024 PUD. The applicant is Christy Mormon, PE for Choice One Engineering, on behalf of Robert Gerwin of Homes by Coach, on behalf of Brand New Sox LLC, who is the property owner. The location is at 5505 Clough Pike, and the zoning there is A, single-family residence. The request is for a planned unit development application of PUD to allow 19 single-family homes and a total of 9.51 acres, with 4.09 acres being open space, which comes out to be 43.01%, with an overall density of two units per acre. A little bit of history on this site, and there is some history, so bear with me. In 2019, the property was considered in Case 7, 2019 PUD, and this was a proposal for 66 single-family lots on 32 acres. And the proposal at that time was 10.8 acres of developed area, 18.75 acres of open space and varying setbacks. At the June 2019 meeting, the hearing, the proposal failed to receive three affirmative votes. And since it didn't receive three affirmative votes, the vote failed. The Anderson Township Board of Trustees moved in resolution to remand the case back to the zoning commission, to a five-member zoning commission. Then this was reheard back in October, and it was approved by the zoning commission. In March of 2020, the Board of Township Trustees overturned the decision of approval made by the zoning commission in Case 7, 2019. Following briefings from respective parties, this was appealed in front of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So this is the site in question, Clough Pike. This was the, in current parcel, although the proposal is just a portion of this. So again, as stated before, the site in question is just 9.5 acres, and you'll see that in the development plan. This is the aerial of the site in question, is heavily wooded, and then you have Clough Creek going through the site. The topography, it has a very steep drop-off from Clough Pike, flattens out into the floodplain of Clough Creek, and then there's a steep increase in grade to the south. The current zoning is A, single-family. There is a portion that's FS6. This is the city of Cincinnati, but all the area in the township is zoned A, single-family. These are some of the site photos that we took along Clough Pike in the driveway where the sign was posted, just looking east and west along Clough Pike. And then this was just a site photo. Our drone is not flying at the moment, so we could not get current aerials out, but we did use the 2024 aerials of cages in the previous slides. So this is just a quick synopsis of the development. 19 single lots are proposed, 9.5 acres developed, four acres open space, and then 1.8 acres in right-of-way. The development is proposing a PUD right-of-way, which is a 40-foot right-of-way. Normally, a township's street is 50 feet, but PUD right-of-ways can go down to 40 feet. The minimum lot size is 7,700 square feet, although some vary. The minimum front yard setback is proposed at 20 feet, sides at 5 feet, rear 30 feet. And then the minimum lot width is at 70, although some are wider than that, depending on their location. The road profile did show a 4-foot sidewalk on both sides of the proposed street, partially in the right-of-way and partially in an easement. There's also a walking path along a gazebo. No sidewalk was proposed along Clough Pike. Four off-street parking spaces were proposed. There's a proposed 15-foot wide buffer along Clough Pike, and then cross-access easement to adjacent properties for future development if that were to occur. The PUD and the proposed density is in compliance with the underlying zoning of two lots per acre, a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. So this is the proposal. Again, Clough Pike here, one access point into the development in a cul-de-sac street, 40-foot right-of-way, 19 lots total. The green area, this is the proposed buffer that was mentioned along Clough Pike, and then the remaining green area is proposed as open space. The hatch marks here, so the blue line in particular is the floodplain. The hatched area, which is through here, is the floodway, and then this is also the floodplain through here. So there's the difference between the floodway and the floodplain. Detention is proposed along this area of the site. And we mentioned cross-access, proposed cross-access easement to adjoining properties up in these two areas. This is the topography map that was submitted. We did ask for a grading plan, and there is some proposed grading shown on this plan, but it is a bit confusing. And that's noted in our staff report. And this is the same photo. This is the landscape plan that was submitted to show the 15-foot wide buffer and landscaping along Clough Pike to screen the residences from the roadway. This was an image submitted by the applicant identifying where the lots, that you saw the back of the lots facing Clough Pike would start as you were driving down Clough Pike, and then this would be approximate location of the new street. The homes plans that were submitted were provided from Fisher Homes, and there were different models that were shown as examples of what could be built there, and they were from Fisher Homes. There were more pages that were submitted in the application, which are on our website, but we only did four of the pages, just to give you an idea of the homes that were proposed. So with the PUD, there are several things that we look for. As stated before, residential PUD is a little bit different. The residential PUD allows an applicant to cluster the homes with reduced setbacks and reduced lot sizes, provided that the overall density of the entire site is still within the density that's allowed in that zoning district. And that is what is permitted. The proposed density, again, is 12 dwelling units per acre, and that is compliant with the underlying zoning district of A. So in addition to compliance with zoning, we also look at the township's adopted plans to ensure compliance with that. So that's, if you follow along in our staff report, that's how it's organized. So with findings, again, there's the zoning resolution. Underlying zoning is A, and the requested, permitted area in that zoning district is 20,000 square feet, and this is within the density of that. The proposal is for the 19 lots, with the minimum square footage of 7,700 square feet per lot. But again, the overall density of the entire site would be compliant with the A. And these are the proposed setbacks that are on the plan. So with our applicable plans, we looked at the Anderson plan. Staff was of the opinion that the application was not consistent with the following goals and initiatives of the Anderson plan. One is mobility. There is a sidewalk proposed within the interior street of the development. However, with, the proposal was a 4-foot wide sidewalk, one foot in the right-of-way and three feet within a pedestrian easement. But then the pedestrian, the front yard setbacks were proposed at 20 feet. So we were concerned, a normal parking spot is nine by 19 feet. So we were afraid that only with the 20-foot front yard setback that any cars parked in a driveway would overhang the sidewalk, and this wouldn't work for pedestrian circulation. So in addition, no sidewalk was proposed along Clough Pike or connections to adjacent pedestrian facilities. There is currently not one on Clough. The township is in the process of constructing one on Clough, down to the Swum Club. Quality of place. So Anderson Township is a community that strives to be sustainable and resilient in practices. And we didn't feel that the information submitted demonstrated that it was compliant with this, this chapter of the comprehensive plan. It is 9.5 acres, and 40% of that was proposed to be open. But then, this is a small piece of a much larger lot, and it wasn't demonstrated what would take place with the remainder of the property. And it's unclear of whether that would be protected. If it would not be protected, if it would be available for future development, not enough information was submitted on what the remainder of the tract would be. And then natural and environmental resources, this is a goal in the comprehensive plan. The vast natural and environmental resources of the township will be protected for future generations. So a concern of staff, again, based really, we didn't feel enough information was submitted to determine this. The topography is extremely steep. There are at least nine lots within the floodplain. The floodway goes on to some of these lots as well. So it was unclear to us, based off of the grading plan that was submitted, what grading would need to be taken place, how the creek would be stabilized, what retaining walls would be needed, what trees would be preserved, what trees would not be preserved on the site. Clough Pike, or Clough Creek is also a blue line stream, which does require review by the Army Corps of Engineer. So we didn't have any information from the Army Corps of Engineer or from Hamilton County Stormwater or from Hamilton County regarding the stability of the hillside. Housing, this is an area that we felt that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan in housing. The comp plan does acknowledge the need for diverse styles of housing and new market or new development. But we didn't feel that this took precedent over the other concerns from the comp plan. So the recommendation, again, was that more information was needed. The density is compliant. However, there were a lot of unanswered questions, specifically, and I didn't go over access on Clough Pike. We didn't hear from the county engineer of what may be required for access for the street, if any improvements on Clough Pike would be warranted for the new development. if any improvements on Clough Pike would be warranted for the new development. We didn't hear from a lot of the county agencies regarding the topography, the hillside stability, hillside development regulations, the floodplain manager or the Army Corps of Engineer. So really, based on all of that, we feel that more information is needed to make a decision on this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Let me go back to the, this plan here.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Dr. Baker, any questions of staff?
Um, do we know anything about the price point of these homes?
I'll leave that up for the applicant to answer.
That's all.
Ms. McBride, any questions of staff?
Yeah, um, did the, I'm sure they get routed to the fire department. Do they have any issues with turning trucks around?
They did not do an analysis of that yet, so no. The fire department hasn't come.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a concern. That's all.
It is a, a PUD street, and it would meet the minimum requirements of a PUD street, although they didn't look at the turning radiuses of the roadside. Okay.
If the applicant would like to come forward, state your name and address, affiliation to the case, and present your evidence, and if you're attorney, please state that for us.
Hello, my name is Robert Gerwin. I'm with Coach Development. Do you want my business address or my home address? Business address would be 5725 Dragon Way in Fairfax, 45227. Thanks for giving us the time today to discuss our project. The, originally when we came through five, six years ago, we had 66 lots. They were 55 feet wide, 110 feet deep. These are 70 feet wide, 110 feet deep, so the lot size increased by 30%. The, the amount of lots has gone down from 66 to 19, so it's been reduced tremendously. The, when we went through the, also Paul admits that we did, we are planning on dedicating 50 feet of right of way along Clough Pike there, so that, that would be maintained as a buffer. You know, the, the sidewalk along Clough Pike, five years when we went through this, we sort of circled around this before as well, and the plan that was approved back then did not have the sidewalk along Clough Pike. So if that's something that the commission would like to have, that's certainly not an issue to us, but at the time, it just felt that it was a, a dangerous, it just, it just windy and dangerous along Clough Pike there, but if the commission wants a sidewalk along Clough Pike, that's not an issue. The plan that was approved five years ago only had one sidewalk on the side, going down the main street, our street, the development street. We've proposed two, but you know, again, the front yard setback issue creates an issue, and maybe it's best to just have one sidewalk down one side of the street so we can eliminate that problem getting out of the right of way. The, you know, in terms of, the price point would be about $800,000 for these homes. Reducing the lot density so much, just a numbers issue, so the, the lot prices are more expensive and the homes will be more expensive. But being at only 19 lots before we were at 66, in the traffic study we did, we were right on the edge of needing a turn lane. So the discussions have been, by reducing the amount of lots by two-thirds, we won't need a turn lane, so, which is good for all of us. The, in terms of, Paul, I think misspoke, the, the, the lots, the floodplain encroaches on some of the lots, not the floodway. The floodway, you can't be, you can't do anything in the floodway, but the floodplain can go through FEMA, so.
Kristin, you want to talk a little bit about the FEMA part of it?
I'm Kristy Marmo with Choice One Engineering, 8956 Glendale Milford Road, Loveland, Ohio, 45140. In regards to the, I think, Paul, you mentioned something about the Army Corps. So the Army Corps deals with more on if we're directly impacting the stream and like the high water mark, which we will not, we don't, do not plan to do. So we will be doing like a hydraulic analysis, which is a very detailed engineered modeling to revise the FEMA flood maps to eliminate those, I think there was a few, the lots that are in the floodplain. We'll do modeling to remove those lots from the floodplain, and then also as a part of that, we have to make sure that there's no detrimental impacts from the upstream and downstream of Clough, of the creek as well. So that'll be done, if zoning is approved, that'll be like the, the next, one of the next steps. Yeah, so the FEMA will be through FEMA, and then the Hamilton County Floodplain Administrator would be the ones involved and not the Army Corps at this point, just for some clarification.
And about the, and FEMA is six to nine months out going through their approval processes, so you know, they're, you know, you all are busy, everybody's busy, but to, to go through and not have zoning approved and to go through a FEMA approval process, it just doesn't make any sense, not only the money, but people's time and energy. So that's why we're here and prior to that, and if it gets approved, then we'll meet those, those obligations and requirements. One of the other things that we've changed in this plan is the prior plan had lots on the north side of the community street closer to Clough Pike, and here we've moved it to the south side, majority of the lot, so there's more, there's a lot more space between the units and Clough Pike, where before there was, you know, 100 feet before you got to the rooftop, now there's, you know, it's almost 180 feet, so, so I think that's an additional feature. On the lots 17 through 19, on the left side there, there was a question about landscaping in the back of those lots. The, the hillside there in the back is pretty steep, and the home that is at the top of that parcel is about, it's about 180 feet away, and the topo's, their house is about 40 feet above, and it's all trees. I mean, if there's something, if you'd, if you'd like us to, you know, put a buffer line along there, we can, we can add that buffer along there, but it, it really isn't, it really isn't necessary, but that's, that's my opinion in terms of just walking the property lot and seeing how many trees are there and the topo involved. I don't know if it's worth noting, but Paul, your original plan did not show that parcel on the left side, your site plan, when you did the parcel. There's two parcels for this property. That right there, it's, that parcel to the left is included in what we're proposing here.
Thank you for, so.
It's, it's not, I mean, I guess it is significant, but it's, that should be included in there.
Yes, you're right.
There would be an HOA that would manage the common areas and the buffer zone along the property, along the, along Clough Pike, you know, keep it to the standards we all want to see, and I think that's all I can think of. Any questions, I'd love to answer.
Ms. McBride, any questions of the applicant?
So, just so that I'm clear here, the property to the, I guess it is, to the left that you were saying, is that, is that in addition to this 9.51 acres that we're seeing on the site plan?
Well, it's to the north, but it, but it is inclusive of the 9.51 acres.
So what kind of site distance do you have of the proposed access point on Clough Pike?
We did a site, we did a site analysis prior, and we have that. I believe it's, we didn't have any issues with ODOT. I'm not sure what the number is. Do you know what that is?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but. Whenever we had the site, the previous site, that was, that entrance was determined the best end, the best location of it. We did a, let me see who was all. Yeah, we did a site, we did a site distance analysis, so that was through with the county engineer, I believe is who that was through.
Right, because you indicated it was ODOT, and it's not an ODOT, so.
Yeah, it's the, the county engineer, yep.
Yeah, right. And you have an update at that or anything?
We have not.
Okay. And then.
Because the, the entrance hasn't changed, so it would, you know, in terms of site distances, it wouldn't be any different.
But then maybe other changes to Clough Pike.
Yeah.
Second of all, what, talk to me about what, where you're going to have retaining walls, how tall they're going to be, what they would look like.
So the retaining walls in the back of lots 17 through 22 will be 15 feet, down to five feet, and those would be the only retaining walls on the site.
And what would they be, what would they look like, and would you have fencing, I guess, up in the top?
On top, we'd have to have fencing on the top of it.
And what kind of fencing would you have?
Yeah, my first thought would be some sort of privacy fencing, but maybe a wood fence that's stained or something, so it's not so, so it's a little bit more discreet would probably be a better fit.
And have you engaged the hillside trust at all?
I have not.
Okay, I guess those are the only questions I've got.
Dr. Baker, any questions of staff?
No.
Not at this time. A few questions, you know, it looks like Lot 13 sort of impedes into the landscape buffer, as far as what's identified as the lot and what is identified as landscape buffer. Is that truly going to be a landscape buffer that's going to be part of the HLA responsibility, or is that going to be part of Lot 13?
Let's see here. Is this one in here? Well, we would do an easement on that, so it'd be, maintain the 15-foot landscape buffer. So that, that solves that problem.
And then the landscaping that would be proposed in that, would that be under the HOA requirements?
It'd be maintained by the HOA.
Okay. And that would be sort of encumbered on that lot prior to its marketing?
That'd be right.
You know, looking at the floodway, I believe, the sort of, from the gazebo towards the four parking spaces, it looks like that walkway is partially in the floodway?
The intent is to be, to not be in it, so.
The intent is to not be in it.
Okay.
Looks like it's right along the edge.
So is Lot 12 then going to be reduced in depth? That one, the butt, that walkway I was talking about?
Yeah, we'll need a bigger plan to identify that. I'm not, I'm not positive. We would hope not to, but we'll have to make a bigger scale so that we can see what the, the dimensions are.
And, just to clarify, sorry, as we progress through the analysis and the modeling of the FEMA stuff, this, the floodplain depended, so this is just like a preliminary floodplain kind of where we got through, but as we get further into it and actually do the analysis, that may adjust, you know, a few north or south kind of thing. So I guess my point is that it's showing it's right along the edge of the floodway now, but as we get further into the design, that may change one way or the other.
If the intent is to stay out of.
It's got to stay out of.
Stay out of the floodway, correct.
You know, without seeing sort of any, you know, and I agree, the grading plan was a little difficult with, to read with existing grades and slightly proposed grades and truly how they intermesh, you know, any grading outs beyond sort of what's identified as the, the actual lots? I mean, I would imagine you're going to have to grade into, well, for the detention area, you're going to have to grade that, but you know, how far beyond sort of those lots are you going to be grading?
Are you talking on the north side, south side, all the above?
Really all sides. I mean, you know, we talked about, or you know, it was presented to us that the 50-foot right of way, that would be maintained existing, that looks more like underbrush than truly vegetation, in my opinion, driving by slowly and not trying to get rear into. But you know, grading in that direction, which would take out more than, you know, sort of that's being preserved, so to speak, and then also towards Clough Creek.
So obviously, we're going to be grading the stormwater basin, and then as for like the southern part portions, we, the plan is to tie into the existing as soon as possible to have the least amount of impact to the existing features, and that goes for, I guess, the north and the south side as well.
So really, and I know you don't have a final grading, but it's going to be really clear-cut, so to speak, anywhere you're going to grade, correct?
Yeah, needs to be.
Yep, that's what I would.
Develop something, it's got to be right on it, so.
Yeah, but you know, there is some greenway between, you know, near Lot 13 that could be preserved, that there's existing trees in there and grading could allow, but you know, I'm just trying to get an understanding of, excuse me, what we see today and what will be there, you know, if this is approved and goes forward. That's really all the questions I have, I think, at this time, so thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none. If anyone would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing no one making presentation towards speaking in favor. If anyone would like to speak opposed, please raise your hand and I'll identify you. We'll start far left, back row. Ma'am? Yes? Your right, my left, sorry. If you could please come up, state your name and address and affiliation to the case. I apologize, if I don't go in an order, then I'm going to lose where we are in the process, so thank you for my idiosyncrasies.
Hello, hello, this, I'm Susan Wheatley, and I live at 6104 Clough, which is just down a little bit from this proposed development on the other side of the street. We've done this before, and I, I particularly now want to highlight why this failed the last time, because it's heading the same way, it's the same issues again. Yes, there are fewer lots, but the, the, this very delicate area, which I know you'll be hearing about more from Eric Russo, and my husband will be speaking, on the, on the grading issues and trees and the environmental issues, which have to be met under the Anderson Plan as part of the zoning, you know that with the PUDs, right? So what, what happened the last time is a lack of information. That's what happened, and it's, here it is again. I thought we'd hear a lot more tonight, honestly, and the staff report, I think in a really excellent way, highlighted all the deficiencies in this application, point after point after point. It should be denied. We have gone through this and through this, and I am, I'm really surprised, and to do a quick recap, and we'll drag us, February of 2019, this commission unanimously denied an application on this lot, these, well, this space. Came back again in June, some changes, not many, and deadlocked. Then the trustees remanded, as we heard, for the commission to have five commissioners then, and they, they instructed this developer to come forward with specific information on grading hillsides, and so the developer came back and, and. And so the developer came back and in October, at the hearing with the five commissioners, sorry, it was earlier, it was the deadlock, um, the commission approved it, I believe there was one dissent. The citizens of Clough Pike, which was a group formed then, and we raised money and we paid out of our own pockets to hire a lawyer, and I did a lot of the work too, just myself, I'm just an individual, I'm a lawyer, but I don't do this work, but I tried to help. We appealed to the trustees who then overturned it. Then this developer went to Court of Common Pleas, where we filed a motion to intervene, the citizens. We paid for that, we worked on that, we gathered affidavits from all around and the court, we were getting ready for briefing, which was coming up in January, it was during the pandemic at this point. This had happened in twenty nineteen and then in January of twenty twenty was when we went to, um, we, we went through some of this stuff with the trustees and then the appeal, uh, sorry, then the case in front of common pleas, just before the briefing would have been due, which we were working on and paying a lawyer for, the developer just dismissed the case, gone. Now here he's back. We have no bridge this time, we have no forty, forty lots, but I didn't hear anything that suggests that if we continue this hearing again and just ask for a little of this and a little of that, that we'll get it. I have no faith that this area, that this is the developer, yes, this is, this is already zoned residential, so it can be developed. Is this the developer for that, though? Is this the one? Is this the plan? I say no. And, um, we have gone through a lot and you heard, you just heard FEMA, well, we're not going to do that now. It's not just the dollars, it's other people's time. The walkways, was it in a floodway? What's going to happen to it? Don't know. Traffic sightlines, which we had a lot of discussion about last time, you know that's a blind curve. We just had an accident this weekend. Guardrails knocked down on another curve farther down at Clough. The traffic sightlines weren't updated. I mean, minimal effort has been made here. It's just redo it, throw it back at them again and see what happens. Well, I don't think that's acceptable or responsible in an Anderson Township for a way for developer to proceed and this, this community highly values the environmental protections. We do need houses, no doubt. We need housing, but this isn't the solution. This is no solution. Some housing down there may be, but this isn't the one, so we ask you to deny it. Thank you.
The next person to your left, my right, uh, please state your name and address and please remember that the testimony to the commission is supposed to be addressed to the zoning code and not really opinions toward this, looking for facts. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, I'm Tony Becker, six one zero four Clough. I'm the husband of Susan. And I've been documenting the Clough Creek corridor for, for years now because we, we live along it and I just value it as a watershed. So, so I've seen development from, from Harmony and things that have happened along the creek for many years now. I think Eric will talk more about the hillside and this, and I'll address the stream. And I have a lot of, a lot of pictures and from last time we went through this, you have a folder more of photographs. This is, uh, just a typical bank on the north side of the creek. This is the kind of volume of water and erosion that's happening. And, yes, yeah. And several, eight or nine of those houses are in, in the floodplain, um, hundred-year floodplain. I don't know if anybody knows, that doesn't mean maybe, uh, you know, an event in a hundred years, once in a hundred years. That means a one percent chance annually of a flood event. Um, I, I would be very concerned if I had a house, you know, in the flood, floodplain or near the floodway. And I know, I know staff is, is wondering and asking about modifications to the creek, creek edge, um, and I have some questions on what, what exactly is that going to be? There's no proposal. Is it going to be riprap? Is it going to be concrete blocks? Is it going to be steel pilings? Just a half mile off the road at sixty-three ten and copper leaf? Maybe these next. A house that was built in two thousand one out of FEMA's floodplain and floodway and yet. Like two years later, the, uh, the owner is concerned about the, uh, enclosure on Stack Yard of the city's erosion. Which is what this is solution, I think, is still. I don't know if they, uh, uh, do that or more, but, um, you know, is that what these owners are looking at, at down the line, if you allow that, you know, this to happen? I've got one more example. Harmony, they, uh, you know, that was a very extensive, um, project, um, in a very, I think, really turbulent area. This red line here represents what, what I'm sure the Army Corps of Engineers said was okay to do. This is another modification to do to the creek. That's steel pipe, that's, yeah, it's, uh, steel, uh, goes across all, all the potential, uh, parts. This is the part of complex next door, see, they're totally, they're, you know. Those are thirty-two feet, they're around, uh, stadiumized area. Twenty twenty-four. Erosion is still happening. This is a longer pile on the edge. Yeah, that kind of, uh, relief that, of, of that current edge, that's, that's all along, that's the, you know, that's the last creek, I have to go in. And now some of my, uh, it's, 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 I don't know. And I must see that as a solution. Harmony also, this is the last bit of evidence here. Here's. Harmony, you know, they, they did their due diligence and they agreed to, uh, a detention overflow, a huge detention overflow system, um, that would be west of their development and, um. So the water went around, and, and just wanted to protect this creek and also make it, uh, plenty of riprap and just like, uh, south side, I think, and south side. All the bits, especially, uh, which would be protected, considered, but now, it's the largest, uh, stone field ever, ever. And, uh, with a sidewalk along Clough there, along Clough Pike, um, I'd be concerned about doing that until the issue with erosion is, is, um, you know, looked at because it's, it's going to disappear. And I don't think any of these considerations are really being made. Anything to the creek is going to affect, as you guys know, what happens downstream. So I hope, hope you just, just dismiss this case right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person over, thank you. Get name, address and affiliation to the case.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eric Russo. I'm the executive director of the Hillside Trust. Uh, this is my thirty-fifth year with a nonprofit organization. We advocate for responsible hillside preservation and development. This is my third time before your commission in the last six years to comment on the development of this particular parcel. Granted, it is a reduction in size from the sixty-six units. Unfortunately, it's a very unrealistic site plan. You asked for us to comment on the zoning components of this. I would argue to say that even trying to build half these lots is going to be unrealistic. Without a grading plan to look at the grade changes from the back end of the properties down to where the creek is, uh, you're going to see some massive grade changes. To try to get a double-loaded street with retaining walls, uh, with the street in, et cetera, et cetera, I argue it can't happen. And we looked at the development, uh, from twenty nineteen with development across the creek, the other forty-seven units. The geomet, the geometry that did not add up. You had in some cases thirty-foot changes in relief from the back end of a house to the front of a house, that's three stories. And without a, a grading plan here, it's really difficult to appreciate when you're looking at one-dimensional map like this, just how difficult this site is to develop. It's deeply in size because of Clough Creek. And Clough Creek is continuing to downcut along this, this trench here because of the amount of storms we're getting, no less one hundred-year storms are increasing in this area. Since I last appeared before your commission, we put together a landslide documentary in twenty twenty-two that showed that we're one of the, uh, four highest landslide areas in the country. This area here has soils that are underlain with Eden soils that are known for their erodibility and their landslide-prone nature. And you've got a creek here that's undercutting it continuously. That's a major issue to consider here. The other issue with this development too is the fact that with the, the detention base in there, there's, there's no way that can get engineered in either with all that they're trying to accomplish here. I think what the staff reported here makes sense. There's a lot of parts of the plan that are not consistent and I do want to also note here that no homeowner within Hamilton County, let alone the greater Cincinnati region, can get landslide insurance. No longer is it covered. You just cannot get a rider for landslide insurance. So when a person buys a property like this, the burden is on them to fix landslide damages, which if there's going to be an HOA, it's going to be the HOA to pay for landslide damages, which in this case could be such that maybe they can't even live on that property longer because of significant damage. Uh, this property possibly could be developed, but not according to the configuration you see here. It's going to probably be far, far, you, far, far fewer units and even then it's going to be a challenge from that standpoint. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak opposed to the application? Yes, sir. If you could please, again, state your name, address and affiliation.
Hello, I'm Guy Wolf at six thousand one Stirrup Road. Uh, that's in Turpin Hills and I'm up the hill from this proposed development. First off, I'd like to thank the staff for the excellent analysis using the plan that we have. So there, I have six points and four that I, I will just say are concurrences with, with theirs. Uh, first, and, and Sue Wheatley did a nice job of taking us back through a, a real, it seems like almost a bad dream now, five years ago. It, it was part, it was essentially going to be the phase one of that larger sixty-six unit, um, project. And in spite of the applicant saying that was approved, I would add the adverb improperly approved, because it was rejected by the trustees in March of twenty twenty. So it, it, it's a rejected proposal. Again, the lawsuit ensued, thousands of dollars and a lot of time invested to finally be rid of that proposal. Uh, second concurrence, the nine point five one acres, it includes a significant amount of that is in the floodway. It looks like it's about one point seven or one point eight acres that's in the floodway, leaving at most seven point eight acres of quote, "buildable" land. The, the staff talked about the twenty percent grade and, and that was a, a very important enhancement to our PUD regulations. And if, if you look at the contours on that, uh, on the north side there, uh, several of those, um, properties have slopes far exceeding that twenty percent. Also, the staff pointed out about the floodway has changed, uh, its, its, um, its bed several times and since the two thousand nineteen proposal, and if, if you want to go back in history and look at that one, it has actually migrated north, so it's closer to the proposed buildings than it was. And one thing about the floodway, um, we all intend to stay out of the floodway, uh, but the floodway gets a vote. And it's upstream about a mile, it's claimed two full apartment buildings that are part of an apartment complex. A couple other points, traffic increase, estimate, uh, the institution of, uh, institute of traffic engineer factor on that would generate about a hundred and eighty-one more trips per day. Finally, the lot sizes change the character of a neighborhood. Staff did a nice job pointing out that if you have those small setbacks, essentially people are parking not in the garage, but on their driveway, overhanging that sidewalk. It eliminates any utility that that sidewalk would have. I would just summarize and, and ask you, as our zoning leaders, um, you, you've seen this before, it's your responsibility to look after the Anderson Township residents, so I implore you to take the action that you can now and deny this application. We don't need to go through this again. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to speak opposed to the application?
Over this. My name's Deena Beal Moats. I'm at one zero zero two Nimitz Lane, four five two three zero. So selfishly, I just want to keep the green space. We own the property at five five three one Clough. I agree with what everybody said. The water can get really scary and dangerous down there, particularly with the flood happening. I don't see how you can put some homes there without having a lot of difficulty. I don't know how fire trucks could get in and out. It's super steep, our driveway's really steep. I'm just worried about accidents happening. Definitely, I'd vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak opposed? Would the commission like the applicant to address anything that was brought up by the opposition? If no, we'll close the public hearing.
So we'll ask them if they would.
Would you like to speak to anything that was brought up by, uh, opposition of, you know, additional facts? Okay. All right, well, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and open conversation amongst the commission. So Mrs. McBride, we'll start with you now.
Well, um, I appreciate that, uh, excuse me, that the applicant feels that they have reduced the number of lots and, and that is definitely a step in the right direction, but I personally feel like there are just way too many unanswered questions on a very sensitive site and a very important site in the township. And we don't have things like an accurate grading plan, um, we haven't talked to the human engineers office, we haven't talked to the fire department, we haven't talked to Public Works, um, and the list kind of goes on. And the pictures of the Fisher homes were lovely, but, um, there's a lot more to this property than that. And I just don't feel like they have properly, uh, addressed all of the issues, even down to twenty-foot setbacks in driveways and I drive a big SUV and all of a sudden people have to walk around my car for the sidewalk. I mean, and that's a, I, I'm going to say minor detail, um, it's not if you're trying to walk on the sidewalk, but, um. detail. It's not if you're trying to walk on the sidewalk. But there's just so many issues on this site that have not been addressed, at least to my satisfaction, this evening. So.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I really appreciate the job that Paul and his team did. And I agree with everything. I think that this is very fragile. And you really, to make it worthwhile, there has to be a lot of bang for the buck. And, you know, I respectfully disagree that this matches the township plan for residential development. We do not need 19 more $800,000 houses. That does not meet what the township needs. And so, to me, there's just too many unanswered questions and too little bang for the buck.
Thank you very much, Dr. Baker. I would concur with, you know, the use and the lack of information of truly how it's going to be executed. You know, I think we are looking at a zoning district, how it applies to that, but also how that development would actually be executed to the degree that our expertise would be. You know, yes, county engineer and all that is going to have a lot of things, but we should understand the height of retaining walls, the idea of what's going to protect occupants uphill from those retaining walls, the nature of the development in itself that includes all of those aspects. And also relying on those engineering expertise that comes from the county to say, yes, this is developable, developable. The fire department's saying, yes, we have good access to protect the public safety of these occupants, et cetera. So without that information, you know, it's really hard, I think, for us as a commission to go forward with some sort of approval or anything else. So I guess I'll leave it up to the other commission members of how you would like to proceed by making a motion.
I'm proposing a motion for some other discussion to get. I would make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Township Trustees on case 4-2024 PUD, Clough Creek subdivision, which is at 5505 Clough Pike, that we recommend denial of the request. And that is based on the general PUD standards, the staff recommendation, noncompliance with specific sections of the Anderson Township plans, and the lack of detailed information that the commission needs to consider this property for future development.
Just a clarification, since it is a PUD, it's a quasi-judicial decision for the zoning commission. It will not go to the, yeah, it will not go to the trustees unless it were to be appealed.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, no.
Back that out of the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Ms. Donald, if you please call over.
So just to clarify, it's a motion to deny.
That's correct. That was my motion.
Uh, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Goethe?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a brief recess, so everyone that doesn't want to hear the next one can exit, and we can take care of other business.